It's exactly proper.
Okay.
Tommy's all he got.
Yeah, that's it. You know what, we need to take a picture, this is the first time I've seen this.
I was gonna say, I've never done a meeting. Yeah, do that, yeah.
The Halifax County Board of Commissioners meeting on September 16th, Fire Federal will officially come to audit this time. Thank all of you all for being here. We're gonna be led by Commissioner John Smith, and then we're gonna do the pledge of allegiance in unison. Those of you who wants to join us, please stand.
Look, my father, when he was born, he put on a brace, coming at his hour, he was smiling back to you, first of all, he was a lot of his own uses, who in they gave his life, those persons that believed in him might have life, might have life or something. They want to thank you, their father, your minister, obviously, how you watch your birthday, gather, and that way there's your worship's master. Thank for how you've courted our steps in you. Spine, as in this afternoon, this afternoon, worship's not taken, pray us a discipline count, worship's master, praying for both of God, the wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, passing their love, the things that we do, we please in your sight, please in your sight, if I didn't, we made efficient, these people over here, the father. They ask for worship's master, that's your best, you're running this rule, was absolutely saying amen, amen, we give our, we ask that you please look down, permission to Johnson, that the father, realizing they've lost them all, but heaven to be reminded, they love their past, no sorrow, they have this God, they ask no worship's master, keep us now, we will keep you, this is my understanding, would you step before me, say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for I do appreciate Commissioner Smith, including both of our colleagues, in this prayer. Commissioner Vice Chair Brewer is out, she's having eye surgery today, and she has a cataract, and we're praying that things go well with that. Commissioner Johnson lost her granddaughter over the weekend, and of course, we certainly want to keep her in our thoughts and prayers, and her granddaughter had been sick for a while, and Ms. Johnson and the family's been really hanging in there, and certainly our thoughts and prayers are gonna be with both of those latest tonight. We're gonna move our attention toward the adoption of the agenda. Trust that each one of the commissioners have had an opportunity to review the agenda, so entertain the motion for the adoption, if that's your pleasure. Okay, motion made by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Smith, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, all opposed. I know we got a short agenda tonight, but I do want to be mindful and remind you that we need to make sure your mics are turned on when you speak into them. Next item is the conflict of interest. In accordance with the Halifax County Boards of Commissioners Rules of Procedure in the North Carolina Journal Statute Section 153A-44, it is due to every member present to vote on all matters coming before the board unless there's a conflict of interest as determined by the board by law. Does any board member have a known conflict of interest with respect to matters coming before the board tonight?
No conflict.
Okay, no conflict?
No conflict.
No conflict, sir.
Madam clerk, let the record so reflect that the four commissioners present do not have any conflict with matters coming before us tonight. And I do want to thank Michelle for filling in tonight, as a clerk, thank you so much for that. Next item is gonna be the public hearing, and of course, just before I read the statement and open the public hearing up, we're gonna hear from our illustrious county attorney, he's gonna be talking about a public hearing, it's gonna be regarding to the appropriation expenditure of the IDF grant funds for municipal water replacement. Attorney Rollins.
Happy birthday, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
First of all, this is a public hearing concerning a grant that the county has received from the Department of Commerce Industrial Development Utility Account to fund the replacement and the encasement of a segment of the town of Enfields and Water Main near the Stella Jones Corporation project, which we are supporting through this utility account grant. Since these are public funds, before you can appropriate those for expenditure on that project, you must hold a public hearing, and so the time for the public hearing is now. And after that's through, we'll discuss further action by you later in the agenda.
Okay, all right. At this time, I'm gonna read a statement before I ask for a motion to open up the public hearing. Opening statement for public hearings, public hearings are held for the purpose of receiving comments from the public regarding a specific subject. Those persons designed to speak will give their name, their physical address, their phone number, and the name of the organization they're speaking for, if applicable. We request that each speaker limit their comments solely to the issue at hand and not direct comments towards specific individuals. In the interest of time, please do not repeat facts or issues covered by previous speakers. If you wish to comment, you should express your opinion on the subject matter and give the board an understanding of whether you favor or oppose the issue being discussed. The Halifax County Board of Commissioners values and appreciates the opportunity to listen to the citizens of Halifax County and respect requests that the above guidelines be followed. So colleagues, at this time, I would ask for a motion to open up the public hearing for the matter in regards to what Attorney Rollins was talking about.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we open the public hearing for the, what is it, grant fund?
Right.
Yes, sir.
Okay, motion been made by Commissioner Smith, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Davis, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, all opposed like sign? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, for the listening public who may not be here, I neglected to say that the amount of the grant is $125,185, and that is the total amount that is expected for the project. No county funds will be used for this particular project.
Thank you.
Apologize for that.
No, sir, you don't, thank you, Attorney Rollins, for adding that to it. Okay, I don't see anyone coming forward, what is your pleasure in regards to closing the public hearing, Commissioner?
Mr. Chair, since no one has come forward, I move that the public hearing be closed.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Webb, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, all opposed like sign? Okay, thank you for that. Agenda item, item A, is the amended grant project ordinance, Welling City Schools, new six through 12 grade school construction project. Attorney Rollins.
Yes, sir, and I was just thinking, this was Tommy's first chance to come speak, but he declined. We have, we've already taken action sometime, I think in our last month, about the additional funding that was received from the Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund concerning the Weldon Middle School High School project. We've got additional funding of $12 million with an additional $600,000 in county matching funds. That now brings the funds available for the project to a total of $65,110,399, $62 million from the Needs-Based Public School Capital Fund, $3,110,399 from the county. We've done other things we needed to do to have this grant moved forward, however, we need to do the grant project ordinance and amend that. That is in your agenda packet for you to review and approve, and all we would need from you at this time is to approve that amendment to the grant project ordinance. If you have questions about the figures in the grant project ordinance, we've also attached a copy of the cost estimates from the architect on the project, so you'll know where those figures came from. But we have used those architect's figures, and we have balanced the budget in the grant project ordinance for a total end of $65,110,399, and a total expenditure of the same amount.
All right, I think Attorney Rollins was pretty thorough in that, but any questions or comments to him? If not, we need a motion for the adopted, amended, and restated grant project ordinance for Welling City Schools for the new six through 12 grade school construction project.
Mr. Chairman, I still move for the adoption.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Smith, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Webb, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye, all opposed? I tell you what, I knew Commissioner Webb was mighty alone over there.
We got him to do that.
Look, Commissioner Smith, you and Commissioner Davis need to stick it to a right out. Okay, thank you all so much for that. Move to item three, which is the action on the public hearing, and you've heard the information coming from our attorney in regards to that. Attorney Rollins, back on you.
Yes, sir, following the public hearing, you now have to consider adopting a resolution for the appropriation and expenditure of the grant funds for the Stella Jones Rail Project involving the removal and encasement of a section of water main for the town of Weldon. This is a little bit more involved than just adopting the resolution to spend this money, I want to point that out to you, 'cause there's several things you're being asked to do in this resolution. One, of course, is to appropriate the grant funds. The second part that we're requesting that you do is that you authorize county staff to continue negotiations with the town of Enfield for an agreement that would allow us to replace that segment of water line that's part of their system. What we're proposing to do is much like what we did with the Roseburg project when we replaced a sewer line for the Rona Rapids Sanitary District. By agreement, we contracted for the design and construction of that work, and then turned that project back over to the district when it was finished. Similarly here, we will agree to contract for the design and construction of the replacement of this segment of water line that's gonna be under the rail spur for Stella Jones, and we'll turn that back over to the town once it's completed. We are proposing in that agreement to use the town's engineering firm rather than go out to select a different firm, they're gonna be much more familiar with the town's system, and that's gonna be- much more efficient. So included in this resolution is also a waiver or exemption of the selection of an engineer from the Mini Brooks process. His fees will be way, way below $50,000, so you're able to accept this project from Mini Brooks. And then finally, just authorizing the county manager and others to go forward and sign whatever contracts are needed, not only with the town, but with the design engineer with the town of Enfield, and also whatever contractors come on board after we've done the bidding on that project. That's all included in the resolution. It's a lot, but we wanted to get it all done at one time, and then as soon as we've done that, I'm going to ask you to consider also adopting the grant project ordinance. But I'll ask first for adoption of the resolution. I'll answer any questions you have about that.
Okay, as Attorney Rollins said, we'll need to do them separate, so resolution is first. Any questions or comments about that? If not, I'll send a motion.
So move for the adoption of the resolution.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Davis, is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second motion.
They put it to you, Doc.
Well, I gave, I was giving them a chance.
Okay, all right, motion made and second. Motion made by Commissioner Davis, second by Commissioner Smith, and a further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, grant project ordinance.
Yes, sir, the grant project ordinance is very pro forma. You've seen these quite often with our economic development grants. Quite simply, we're using $125,185 from the Department of Commerce, sorry, IDF. Once I start going, I just don't start off. And then we're going to propose to expend that, as you see on the grant project ordinance, $87,000 for the water line replacement, engineering services about $24,835. We've appropriated surveying and legal at $9,000, and in contingency at $4,035, for a total of $125,185. This grant project ordinance also gives the county manager the authority to allocate those expenditures and change those, so long as the budget doesn't exceed $125,185. Unless you have questions, this is what we need to be able to spend the money on the project.
Okay, all right, hearing information coming from our attorney, what is your pleasure?
I move that we adopt the correct project ordinance.
Okay. All right, once we stop laughing, okay, it's matter of second.
I second the motion.
Okay, all right, motion made by Commissioner Webb, second by Commissioner Smith, and a further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay.
All ayes.
All right, thank you. All right, the next item, item number four, county managers' report, Ms. Denton, that you have in mind?
Just very briefly, I don't have anything that I need action on tonight. I just want to point out a few things that your place is. Congressman Davis's office is having office hours this Friday, I believe it's in Scotland Neck. It came in Friday after the weekly update was done, so I wanted to just pass that along to you, so you would have it in plenty of time if you needed to go or needed to share it with anyone. The next thing is, the latest newsletter is out. Really good reading, whenever you get a chance, it's always really good, and has fun pictures. And the last thing is, you've got a few documents there that we're just sharing that we got from the library department last week, and our department head secretary, Chairman Bryant, was there and spent a little bit of time with us that morning, but it's all about embracing your inner dragon. I think you got one of those.
I did.
Okay, I saw, so. And they have a new mascot for the library system, his name is Dewey the Dragon, and so it's just really interesting, and they'll be rolling out more activities with him later this year.
Yeah. Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm just piggybacking a little bit off Ms. Denton's report, because I'll probably forget it when we get to other business, so that's why I'm kind of doing it now. Just wanted to remind you all, it's a lot of activities going on, and Ms. Denton does a great job in putting them in the weekly memo, county memo. But we have, you know, harvest days coming up, as you know. I think the library system has something that's coming up, too.
It was last Friday, they're open house.
Okay, it was open house last Friday, all right, so we missed that. But anyway, it's quite a few, you know, activities coming up, and, you know, anytime that you may, you know, could support any of those, certainly would be appreciative if commissioners, you know, could show up for some of those activities.
And one more that's actually happening this week, they called today, the Lake Asta 911.
Right.
Their symposium is Friday, it's pretty much all day. I think we're going to try to go to part of it, I can't stay the whole day.
Right.
But we're going to try to be there at least part of the morning with them.
Okay, all right.
It's Friday. I think it's nine to three, I think you can go in and register, and they have refreshments at eight.
Is that the community center?
Is that the Lions Club?
Okay.
Okay, at the Lions Club. It should be a near weekly update, if you want to go back and refer just the address and stuff, but I think we're going to try to go for a little while.
Okay.
Friday morning.
I don't think I'd be able to Friday.
Okay.
Another commitment. But anyway, just friendly reminders, you know, it's a lot of things going on, but I do think a lot of times, you know, when we're able to show up for things, I really think that's really important if you can.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
In reference to, I guess, Ms. Denton, in reference to Congressman Davis, do you think it would be appropriate, or do you think I would need to clear that through the embassy, put this on our local radio station?
I think you can totally do that, or, I mean, I can send it to them.
Okay.
Or ask them to do it, I can ask their staff to do it.
Okay, okay.
Is there, is there one local to Scotland Neck?
It is, that's what I was saying, and basically, I'll just drop it off if you know it's okay.
Oh, sure, yeah, that's for sure. Absolutely.
Because I, you know, I'm not, I saw it in our weekly update, but I haven't seen any flyers around town or anything, and.
Sure, absolutely.
The date is pretty close, so I figured that'd be the fastest way to get word out.
Sure.
Yeah, I think they would appreciate that. Yeah, okay, thank you, Commissioner Smith. Yes, sir, Commissioner Webb.
Could you give us an update on the detention center?
Yes, so we have a draft RFQ ready to be reviewed by the management team, RFQ request for proposals to secure an architect for the project. You weren't on the board at the time, but we did this before, and it was for renovations, and this time we're looking at replacing the facility in its entirety, so we'd have to go back out and secure an architect. I'm hoping to get that out sometime in October.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Next item, you finished, Ms. Denton. Anyone else have questions or prefer? If not, we'll move to item.
Maybe share about the access on.
About their presentation? I don't have my notes with me, so I don't know, I was going to, what the most important thing is when they're going to put fiber in the ground and people online, is it first quarter next year?
Yes.
First quarter, 2025, access on the ISP that got the grant for USDA reconnect in the western end of the county, so Hollister into Warren County. They were at a meeting with USDA last week at the tribal offices, and if I remember correctly, they will have fiber in and folks online first quarter, or first six months, I think, is what it was, the first half of 2025.
Okay, all right, very good. Okay, thank you all so much for that. Item five, county attorney, you have anything else?
I don't have anything to add or say, I don't believe.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Okay, on the other business, a few of us may have a few things to say other than just me on the other business. First of all, pleasant here, Missionary Baptist Church, the first lady of the church contacted me, Reverend Cooley Wade's wife, about us doing a letter to the church in regards to their 154th anniversary. I do have that here tonight, and it's been, I have it here to be framed, subject to your approval, and you allow me to make that presentation. I plan to probably attend that church service, I believe it's the first Sunday in October, and I will present it on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, but I do need your approval for that.
No for approval.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Davis, is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, I second the motion.
Okay, second by Commissioner Smith, and a further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the next one is, letter of condolences for the family of James Alfred Tank Williams. As many of you know, Tank Williams served as chairman of the Welling School Board, and he passed on September the 7th, and he was funeralized, I did attend his funeral, and we did pass over a letter, a nice framed letter, to the family from the Halifax County Board of Commissioners, but we do need to make that retro and get your approval for that.
Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Smith, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Webb, and a further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, and I'm just going to make a few more notes here. I know Ms. Johnson had requested approval for her pastor's, it was his 30th anniversary, and of course, I think we approved that at the last meeting, I believe, and then Ms. Davis made a request for White Oak Missionary Baptist Church for their 150th church anniversary, and I believe we approved that at the last meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay, so they're taking care of. All right, now anything else on the other business? Let's see, Commissioner Davis, do you have your letter from the county yet?
Concerning what?
Concerning the White Oak, well.
Yes, it's right here.
You have it, okay.
Right, we have the letters for you, and Ms. Davis, it's the one from Ms. Johnson that we have in draft form. I was going back through Andrea's.
Right, okay.
That we need her to look at before we move forward, but I think there's time on that one.
I believe there is time.
That one's not very time sensitive, the other two, Ms. Davis has person.
Right, and I think, Ms. Davis, yours due tomorrow, right, or something?
I'm not sure, I'll have to look at it and see. But I'll get it too, someone tomorrow.
Okay, right, okay. All right, because I think they're trying to do a booklet for it, I believe, or something. Okay, all right, anything else? Well, we'll let, we'll let your two colleagues over there know that you might longer than I. Okay, any ayes for closed session?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn until the October 7th, 2024, meeting at 9:30?
So move.
Motion made by Commissioner Davis, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Webb, and a further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, this move is adjourned to October 7th, 9:30. Thank you all. Twenty-seven minutes, how about that?
Yeah, we do shorter.
And thank you for this, too, Madam Deputy Director, thank you.
Oh, yeah, she, yeah, Christina, that's really Christina's baby. Contributions, thank you, sir.
Right.
From department, et cetera. We'll send this to Ms. Johnson.
Okay, all right, very good. And she's going to call.
What's his name, praise going to be done?
I know, we got a good bit.
Y'all have a good day tomorrow.
We'll keep it between the two.
That's right, between the three of us, well, they should all be standing when you get back. We have welcomed you to the podium.
This is the grand.
Of course. Yeah, we got it. Yeah, we're bringing it.
A second copy of it?
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Glenn wanted you to make note of that paragraph right there.
We're pretty sure y'all don't, but.
Did you get the card from myself?
Do I need to condition it or not?
I don't think so.
No.
But I do need you to sign there. I'll see you next week, dogs. Still, I'm making a joke, that's what I get.
It's a lot of work being chairman.
Just sign your life away. Yeah, so you, y'all had already signed these.
Yes, a lot of it, we've been around.
Yep, so you'd already signed them now, and then that's just the stuff you need to sign.
You know, y'all make it so easy, I mean, just.